All right, call the meeting to order. Is there anything emergent to add to the agenda?
I have nothing to add.
So would somebody like to adopt the agenda, James? Questions or concerns? All in favor? Posed, carried, and moving on to accounts table for information. Larry? Any questions or concerns?
Go ahead, Larry. EF, double zero six five seven eight. It's part take our tech, our tech, yeah, backup, what's that?
Those are our IT services. They do our posted backup for our computers.
Is that a monthly fee?
Yeah.
Is that right?
They store all our stuff safely and securely.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions or concerns?
I have a question.
Go ahead, James.
EFT six six zero four, the Madison hat CSRD, which requisition? I don't understand the acronym.
That's the capital. Yeah. That's it. All the questions there are?
You got a question?
No, no. All in favor? Both, I just thought you'd do one. It's carried. And then moving on to cash and investment summary. Those, Jim? Any questions or concerns? Of those? Seeing none? All in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Now, item number two, delegations. We have Mr. DeWalt here to talk to us about the street bylaw number eighteen eighty-eight slash twenty nineteen and enforcement of sidewalks, snow and ice.
Welcome, Tom. Or thank you. Good evening. I want to thank everyone for the opportunity to speak to, speak to about a very important safety center in our community and part of this town of Red Cliff Street by law eighteen eighty-eight slash twenty nineteen. Is this something that I want to be doing? No, but I think it's important that for me to bring this up. First off, I want to ask, is the enforcement of the sidewalk clearing by complaint only? I couldn't say.
No, I spoke.
Okay. Thank you. I believe that many residents feel that the peace officer is supposed to be dealing with snow-covered sidewalks without having filed a complaint. If it's not, then maybe the town employee that's in charge of enforcing snow needs to be proactive in getting the problem property owners clearing the sidewalks and not waiting to see if someone reports the property, and if no one does, then ignore them or wait until Chinook rolls in. This is unacceptable if this is happening. Many people are concerned about the length of time it takes some property owners, residents or residents to clear their sidewalks, if they even do, and why it can take reporting the same property two, three, or even four times before the sidewalks are, have been cleared after first reported. Yes, four times reported recently before sidewalk was finally cleared. Some property owners are having to report it after every single snowfall. This has been going on for years with some of them, and it should not be. It seems obvious to many that these residents have not suffered any real serious negative effects from not clearing their sidewalks, or they would be doing them on their own and not just after being reported. For many residents, this is unacceptable. It should not be happening. Having snow or ice-covered sidewalks is a very serious community safety concern, and the town needs to be taking this matter more serious than it seems to be. There are properties that have to be reported every single snow event, and sometimes it takes reporting many times before the properties clear their sidewalks. The people, the property owners that have to re-report it every time a snow event, they need to be dealt with more harshly, I believe. If they were, I doubt that they would have to be reported after every single event. For some of these properties, this has been going on for years. Yes, near this, and I ask why? It saddens me to hear the number of people who attend the Red Cliff Senior Center for Exercise or Cherry Yoga, sometimes up to four times a week say, I'd like to walk here, but the sidewalks are too dangerous. Or I've walked, but I've walked the road because it's safer. Or someone saying, I'll walk every day, but I walk the back yellows because the sidewalks are too treacherous. These types of feelings, statements about the conditions of too many unkept sidewalks is unacceptable in its time that the town administration, this time count time, this town council takes this serious ongoing safety issue serious and do something about it. Everybody knows we live in a climate that snows every single year, so I'm not sure why this is an ongoing issue year after year. The city, the citizens of this community want safer sidewalks and streets, streets to walk in. It angered me when I saw a lady pushing a baby stroller down the street, across an intersection, then onto the road to bypass a snow-covered and ice-covered sidewalk. This was unpassable, and this has happened a more than one occasion. This is totally insane and unacceptable, and this needs to be dealt with sooner rather than later before someone gets seriously hurt, disabled, or possibly worse. In the street bylaw eighteen eighty-eight slash twenty nineteen, section twenty-two thirty, it provides the town the ways of how sidewalks are to be dealt with the remedies available to the town to take care of the problem properties. And I hope the town starts forcing this to the full extent to all problem properties that never clear their sidewalks on their own. Most everyone that lives in the town feels that this bylaw enforcement of it is a joke. If the problem properties were given fines or bills for clearing, that would probably get more of them doing their duties as resident or property owner in the town of Red Cliff with little or no enforcement. If things are going to remain unchecked, then maybe the town could politicize the fact that sidewalk clearing is an option for residents rather than requirement. That way, people who have to hire someone to clear their sidewalks cannot spend the money to have sidewalks taken care of and use these funds elsewhere. I encourage the town CAO and every town councilor to go to the Red Cliff Senior Center near the end these various exercise classes and ask two simple questions, which are, by show of hands, how many people feel that the sidewalks in the community are, are being cleared in a timely manner? Count the number of hands. Then asked by show of hands, how many people feel the sidewalks, snow, ice removal in the community is adequate? I'll bet there will be one hand raised to show support on how good the sidewalks are being cleared now. And I'll bet you there, there will be many hands raised when the second question of clearing being inadequate is asked. This is totally unacceptable when there's someone hired by the community to enforce the bylaw in its time. The sidewalks are cleared as per the street bylaw eighteen eighty-eight slash twenty nineteen in a timely manner. Thank you for your time and action on a serious and pressing issue in our community. I just want to say that we had a snow event February second, which was Friday into Saturday. There were properties reported on Monday. You had a snow event again on the sixth, the Tuesday. The same properties were reported on the Thursday. On the eighth, there was no other snow event. The same properties were reported on the twelfth. Wasn't until after the third reporting on the twelfth, the two of them took care of the properties. It wasn't until the fourth reporting on the fifteenth that the other one cleared their sidewalks. This is unacceptable and should not be taken four times to report the sidewalk before they're cleaned. There's avenues in the bylaw that need to be enforced, and these properties need to be taken care of. Thank you. Is there any questions or?
Does anybody have any questions?
This needs to be addressed because it's a yearly issue, and it's every snowfall.
Somebody like to move, receive listener DeWalt's presentation for information? All in favor? Posed, that's carried. All right, second presentation, we have Staff Sergeant Courtney to give the final report for twenty twenty-three. Fourth quarter reporting.
Yeah, they name it the fourth quarter report because it's the fourth quarter of the year, but yes, our third quarter for this little year, so the reports are a little bit off. So, yes, this is for the quarter from October first until December thirty-first. We just got these information in, and I apologize if I repeat any information that I said last time I was here a couple of weeks ago when I was going over the second quarter. One of the big things this time that they want us to kind of bring up, they're looking at kind of using more of the drones. We are, it's our remotely piloted aircraft system. Right now, they're kind of based in Calgary. They're used mostly for specialty units, but what they're trying to do is their end goal is to try to get one at, say, every second detachment throughout the whole province. Because we don't, our RCMP helicopters are pretty much only in the Edmonton area. We can call them out, but there's a delay. And obviously helicopters, they cost a lot of money to run and all that, so having a, a member that's trained and having a drone is every second detachment that we have quite a few different capabilities. Some of the marks assist with search and rescue, crime scene photography. I will be able to use it during unfolding events, like an active shooter. What they do now is they put them up in the air, they'll just hover over the top and figure a live feed of the whole area when they see where we are, they can see, I guess, wherever the bad guy is and things like that, so. And they do have quite a bit of capabilities where they have night vision, they have infrared, so if we're using them for search and rescue, they might be able to find a person just based on a heat signal in the woods or things like that, so. Those, that program, whenever they, they do get it up and running, will definitely be an asset for community safety everywhere. So for this report, there were quite a few different things that we did throughout October right through to December with regards to kind of community connections, both within Red Cliff and note in the county. So I'll just highlight the ones that were kind of in Red Cliff. One of the engagements on around Remembrance Day, we attended several schools throughout the the area. We were almost requested by almost every single school to attend their Remembrance Day ceremonies, but when they all have them on the single day of the eighth of November, it was kind of hard to get to all the different schools. So I did attend Margaret Wedding School, and that's the one that we went to that day. And we also attended, and myself and Constable Wilkie, the Tim Hortons during the Holiday Smile Cookie Campaign decorated a very large amount of cookies to support the root seller, well, so. If any of yous went there that day, you realize how hard that icing sugar is to get out when the bag starts to cool. I think I busted four or five bags on them, but yeah, it was a really good, good cause. We also had attended the Southeast New York World Crime Watch AGM, and that does encompass this area, and they kind of they took over, where now it's one big group that covers Cypress County, Forty Mount County, as well as Newell County. So it's all three of our detachments for Brooks, Red Cliff, and Bo Island. So they're, they're quite a large group and covered quite a large area now. One of our members did, I guess this year they had the Santa Claus Fun Parade that was usually even last couple of years. Attended all the different communities. This year they just had it in Medicine Hat, and it ended up being, I remember that was the only one there in a police vehicle, so got to lead it through the city of Medicine Hat. We also attended, had the third annual Stuff the Cruiser event here at the Red Cliff Family Foods, and that was attended by members of the RCMP, citizens on patrol, some counselors, as well as bylaw and other members of the community. During that, we raised three hundred thirty, three thousand three hundred thirty-one pounds of food and cash donation. So we were close to our target that we had the year before, but just shy of, of previous years, which I was surprised only because it was warmer and not minus forty like the years past, so. But we did, we thanked the community for that because they did another great job.
You're going to plan it for a warm day next, yeah, next year.
I'll try.
Yeah, because last year was all really tough.
It was my finest hour for you guys last year. Sounds like you brought the lunch on. As I drove by, I felt terrible.
Sorry. So with regards to the priorities, the, for the crime reduction enforcement and education, so during this third quarter, we did see a decrease in overall crimes, property crimes in Red Cliff compared to twenty twenty-two. So break-in enters remain the same, and those are break-in enters, not residential break-in enters, but more short, commercial break-in enters in the industrial area. Theft over five thousand remain the same. We only had two occurrences the year before, two occurrences this year. Theft of under five thousand was up by thirteen percent, and that included two extra occurrences from the year before. Possession stolen property was down by seventy-five percent. I did mark here, it's wrong on there, on this paragraph, but it's correct in our stats. That theft and water vehicles were down by fifty percent, not up. And mischief damage to property was actually up by eight percent, or down by one, eight percent, we had one less occurrence. So we continue to liaise in Southern Alberta District Crime Reduction Unit when we have major kind of where we see a pattern in things, we, we have them as well as our intelligence analysts, as well as the Medicine Hat Police Intelligence Analysts, because we know that what's usually going on in the city, it's the same criminals that are doing the things outside of the city, so. And with regards to enhanced road safety during that quarter, Red Cliff RCMP issued eighty-five speeding offenses, eight moving violations, fourteen other traffic-related offenses. They apprehended four suspended drivers, two drivers with no insurance, and two distracted drivers, as well as a graduated license violation that would have been with, could be anything. I didn't check exactly what the violation was, but it could be alcoholics like zero or a class seven without a parent in the car. And three parking offenses. And they also issued over the, the Christmas, December kind of festive called check stops, three IRS suspensions with for, for impaired driving. With regards to I know there was a question last time I was here about the propane tank stuff that had been, happened a little bit ago. I did find a couple of occurrences. And one, there was some grainy video, but we couldn't identify who it was, and I still don't. It was during the cold snap, so maybe they were stealing them to keep warm somewhere else, but yeah, we did not get any suspects or anything like that from there. With regards to the other statistics, most things stayed the same or went down slightly. One of the big ones that I noticed was the percentage year over year for provincial code traffic offenses, that's down by seventy-two percent. And that, it's compared to last year, but the traffic unit within Red Cliff, the provincial traffic unit has gone through some changes. So they are no longer amalgamated with the sheriff, so all their stats are separate now. And then the traffic unit itself is supposed to have five members. They only have two. So their, their hours are reduced quite a bit, which is a bad thing for them, but a good thing for us because we, we stole some of them for general duty policing, so. Other than that, they're hoping to, to get their units back up and running full with full members, but general duty policing priorities come before the traffic stuff. And with regards to our membership, in this quarter, we were still down by two members, I believe. But since then, we have had the municipal supervisor, they came back from parental leave, so they're back to duty. So now we're only, but of the municipal officers, the established positions were only down by one right now, so that's, that's a positive thing. And out of our two established, I guess, public servant positions in the municipal side, one has been vacant since about December with a transfer, and we hired somebody already. That member was the public servant that was for Bo Island detachment. They applied for this job and got it, so we took them from Bo Island, so they'll start at the end of March when they come back from parental leaves. And we'll have full positions there. With regards to some other statistics towards the in, one of the kind of bigger things, which the numbers don't match in individual occurrences, but two hundred percent is up slightly for nine one one and abandoned nine one one calls, so we're still dealing with quite a bit of those nine one one hang-up type things. Municipal bylaws was up by a hundred and seventy-five percent. With that only went from for us, four occurrences in twenty twenty-two to eleven occurrences in twenty twenty-three, so all of the percentages seem high, the number of occurrences are not quite. Other than that, any questions on the report?
Well, the one thing I, when I was looking over the municipal overview, it's the pooling.
Those numbers.
Financial on you, yeah. When you go through our actual year, the, what was budgeted, I'm assuming they're saying, I'm assuming does like a budget, and then you go into the financial plan. Like, those numbers go considerably higher. All the way down, the third column is considerably higher all the way down, and yet when you get to the bottom, when you look at total cost per officer, it's less than cost per member. So I don't understand that part. Think they take all those pooling numbers, and then your cost per member at the seventy percent?
Yeah, where it says top cost up and down, cost per member.
Right. So how, how can that change that much? Like if the?
Well, I think the total.
The year to date actual, so okay, then you're still, this is only your third quarter by your report, that one eleven? The fourth quarter will bring it up to the one fifty-three that they're projecting.
Projecting, yes.
Okay.
Like that final column would be the year end, so the.
Yeah, right, and yeah, even though this says fourth quarter, you did say that at the start, it's really only the third in the the third year, in your, in your fiscal year. Right, you don't go by calendar year, okay. No, that's, that's probably why I, I didn't tune it out when I was reading it, but I just did as I was looking at it now, so yeah, that's.
But I know what some, some of the questions that have been asked before, when we've had meetings with the financial people in the RCMP, is that if the town, which I think they're doing, because I was asked if the kind of reconciliation was going to be done in December, because.
Well, they were supposed to, but I don't know if it really happened.
Yeah, well, we can look into that. That's because I know you, you guys finish in December, whereas we finish in April.
Yeah. Is there any questions on that first part before we get into the?
Yeah, I have a question about, so the established positions. And although we kind of, I don't really think about this quite a bit over the last year, so many vacancies. Now, the one current vacancy that you have is that, if I remember correctly, is that like a special investigator position? And that's why it's still a vacancy, or you just don't have a member to fill that spot?
No, what we did back in the summer is we got rid of the general investigative section position, and I put that into being just a general duty municipal position.
Okay.
And that's why when you look on the form, we have eight established positions, and then twenty twenty-three full-time utilization. We're like this whole year so far, we've been down by one member that's off-duty sick.
Oh, okay.
On medical leave, so.
But it's filled now by the Bo Island fellow, right?
No, no, this is, it'll work.
This is for general duty members.
Yeah.
Like the police officer.
Yeah, the Bo Island person was the, the detective, that's been, oh, yeah. But if you look, like, there used to be two soft vacancies. They were off on leave, so technically they're not gone, gone.
Yeah, we don't have any hard vacancies that are detached anymore. So if they're all filled, we just, out of even the provincial side and the municipal side, we only have one person currently that is off, and that's it. We're all, everybody's back to police.
Even from that chart, one of them was back on duty, you know, and just one is unsolved.
And our attachment itself is actually has one member that's surplus, so with that member off, we still have the amount of fifteen members that we're supposed to have, because one, one member on, two members on the provincial side are double bumped in the same position, but they haven't touched that yet, so I'm hoping they just don't notice.
So I have another question, and maybe you covered this. So when you're talking about prayer number two, enhanced road safety, Red Cliff RCMP issued eighty-five speeding offenses, but in the town, or is that?
That is just a total ticket issued with this detachment.
Total.
For that quarter. It would take, it, it's difficult to go through and just find the numbers. It's be hard to split them up and see where they are all the time, but yeah.
And that's not traffic sheriff, right? That's just.
No sheriffs.
Sheriff's maybe seven percent. That is both the, the provincial traffic unit as well as general duty members.
So you're, you're hired. I'll take the sheriffs. Over my nephew, if I got it, you slow.
Well, it's about time.
I was even hoping. City, this for a time, I think, ever, I thought he was drunk. It's his first time driving ever. He doesn't have a license either.
Questions? And then we're in the process where you guys have discussed it, and we're going to have other priorities that, that coming up in the next.
Okay. So. You're not going to go through, go ahead.
I was going to move it for information.
Yeah, but you go ahead.
No, 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 it's okay. I'm fine. I read them.
Okay, I'm going to make it.
All done. Thank you. All in favor? Opposed, carried. Right, moving on to minutes, the council minutes of February twelfth. Any questions, concerns, errors, admissions? Step for press because he wasn't there.
Somebody ask herself, but.
Okay, all in favor? Posed, but it's carried.
He shows me.
No. He was doing it.
They were all sickly.
No, you were involved. Right. Red Cliff Cypress Regional Waste Management Authority meeting for information, Larry? Questions or concerns? Any none, all in favor? Posed, that is carried. The Red Cliff Library Board feeding. Jim, those. Correct, it's January. Right, any questions or concerns?
If the desk training, Jim? I'm sorry, did you take the desk training too?
No, they just talked about it. They didn't take it. They were going to look into prices.
All in favor? Posed.
Have you been dispiriting with anything? What'd you take with?
True. I make the little C.
Okay, carry on. Bylaw. The bylaw nineteen sixty-seven slash twenty twenty-four being the supplementary assessment bylaw, and it's here for all three readings. We do this every year. James? It's just to catch any build between December and December.
Or fire.
Well, it's got to be a bill.
Got to be a fire.
I guess you could, we'd never reduce, right? Because somebody would just. Be the bylaw.
Any questions or concerns? All in favor? That is carried. Somebody like to move it for a second? Chris?
So there's what, crash now or not?
Questions or concerns? All in favor?
Host was carried. Would somebody like to move it for third reading? Larry? Let's be unanimous.
You're having right now.
All in favor? Posted. Very unanimously. Correct this Christmas third. Any questions or concerns? All in favor? We can follow. It's Carrie. All right. We have bylaw 1968 slash 2024 being the street by law.
I'll move first reading. Water red.
Next week, we need some significant changes in here.
A lot of blue.
All right, James, put it on the first. And any questions or concerns?
I make a request. When you guys make this many changes. Maybe use a different color font for the ones that are crossed out from the ones that are new because I have to read it twice. It might just be me. But.
You'll need to see your optometrist again. Get your glasses there.
Oh, right. Anyways.
This does look, you know.
It blends blends together.
I will check with the tracking function because it just automatically does it.
Okay.
It's not a big deal, but.
Well, when you're live and you click on the sidebars, it'll it should pop up to changes. Right? Always. Don't they? Don't they do that?
Maybe I'm what maybe.
Well, mine's I downloaded the PDF, so it won't now.
Yeah.
But when you're on live, usually if you come over here and click on it, they'll tell you.
Not in this fancy app that they tell us to use.
Okay. And you have to always thank the viewers that who told them to pop it up. Just one request.
Anyway, okay. Not a necessity.
Go ahead, question. So what's the deal with new driveways? Do we not need any permits for this? Or is it encompassed in the new access to property?
Well, it's in.
And no driveway should be deemed legal just because this being redone. An illegal driveway should stay legal, whereas this actually says every time we redo it, it becomes legal. Which I thought was kind of silly. The old bylaw said upon all driveways become legal and an enactment of this bylaw, right? Yeah. It does.
Under existing driveways?
You could have a bad existing driveway and it shouldn't automatically become wonderful. Anyway.
Nice question.
James, go ahead.
And I if I understand this correctly, these new violation tags that were put into a lot of these bylaw. That's a town of Franklin fine, not a provincial fine like
law by law and ticket.
Yeah, like the violation ticket from our CPO.
That's correct.
Yeah. And so then enforcement of those are if they're not paid, it just rolls to the tax roll. Is that how that works or?
Depending if it qualifies under the MGA.
Okay.
So if it qualifies under the MGA, then yes, we can roll it to the tax rule. If they don't, then we can't. And then we would move to the next step. With regards to the snow on the sidewalks. Yes, we can actually.
You can take that violation tag to that property.
And join into the work.
And if and if you send somebody or hired somebody to do that work, if that fail, then to the owner or occupant, which sometimes is different. And then it can roll onto the taxes. So eventually it's either the owner or the landlord with the owner. Yeah. Eventually faces the problem.
Potential fine.
Okay, so if it's a rental property. You need the bill. The landlord gets stuck in the bill no matter.
In the end.
Okay. So if it's given to the renter and they're an occupant and then just ignore it, it gets tacked on the tax rule. So ultimately the tower. Okay, so it operates the same as our utility.
No, no, the utility.
By that, I mean, yeah, admittedly, the landlord, the owner is responsible.
Yes, okay. The end result is.
Okay, sounds good.
That's a lot. When it all fails to remedy and countervent the bylaw and exile out an order. Well, blah. Good town, right? Something says powered under section 549 of the MGA is discretion. That's what you're talking about.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that's what I thought then.
Yeah, I, there are some violations in here that aren't specifically talked about in the MGA, whereas some are.
Okay.
Yeah. That's why only not all of them may roll onto the taxes.
So I had another question here under this section 41 service of an order. Everything. Note B. By leaving it for the individual, their parent place of residence with someone who appears to be at least 18 years of age. There's a lot of teenagers that could appear to be 18 years of age, but are not necessarily a legal age. So does that wording a little too much open to interpretation?
Well, I think you need interpretation, otherwise you're checking for ID. If the person looks 18, they should be old enough to hand that tag to somebody responsible.
Right. So I guess what I'm getting at is.
What's the worst case scenario you're worried about here? Handing a twelve year old that looks like they're 18?
No, I'm not worried about giving it to a 12 year old. I'm worried about somebody saying, well, you gave it to my 12 year olds. And now I don't have to pay this. And then they take it to court and there's no legal precedents. And then they end up paying more legal fees to you know, do you where I'm going with this? Like if there's not a proper. I don't know if it matters. I just we've dealt a lot with legal issues lately. And so if there's ways that we can keep things in line so that there's not holes that can be poked in it.
There is a true 100% fail proof system, other than I guess we wanted to get ID and everything like that. But this does give some flexibility that you could leave it with.
Okay, that's what I meant. This.
Because you can stick it on the door. Right. And they can just say the wind blew it away or you can mail it. And they'll never pick up registered mail. And then it comes back, right? But it's deemed to be served after five days. So there's all kinds of ways that it may not get there. But if you give it to somebody who looks old enough to pass it on. You're right. Like you didn't. Don't give it to the toddler. Well, I know, but. Hey, man.
Last thing, those if it's a 15 year old, let's say you answer the door and you ask for an ID. Maybe that's, that's not ID. Great. As you're running into that.
That has personally a chance. Um, I don't know what section it's in, but where you talk about clearing sidewalks in the 24 hours. Can you find that for me again?
I think it's still back in the 20s, is it not?
Maybe take in 44 hour. 19?
New bylaw, it's in 22.
Yeah. Okay. So my question was clear any dangerous condition caused by snow or ice within 24 hours from which the dangerous condition was formed? So that's almost three days. Yeah, that's my question.
Snowing.
Then the clock starts.
And the clock stops.
And 12 hours later, it starts snowing again. It becomes diluted. You can't get out there and say, oh, I died that.
Just wonder, I assume we stole this from other bylaws.
Oh, no, we made it up.
Municipal base. But I just wonder if there's not a better way to word that.
We have looked at other bylaws. This was wording that we had used previously.
Yeah.
Our old bylaw said that too, that it's from you, you, you have to wait till it stops. But some people will argue that was silly to shovel it in the middle.
The old one said 24 hours after the time such snow, ice, dirt or other structure was deposited or formed.
Yeah.
But still, so it's still, it's still, it's started, what ended in the middle? So was it 10 minutes? Three days. After the time it formed. That's the first snowfall or is that the last no fair? When did it form?
So you wait on the three days snow. Do you wait for it to end?
Well, no, I can't do it for me. Heard the 20 bucks for doing today's, which was just on my step.
Well, that was nice of him. It's cute.
He just paid well, not November. But a heavy snow, of course, you go and do it halfway through. But I'm just saying that section is a little ambiguous for me. But I don't know of a better way to word it.
If you're in the middle of a storm for three days. There should be some grace instead of driving around on day two writing tickets because people didn't shovel the snow from day one.
Well, I agree. Well, I think it's hard to know day old snow from first snow. So if you were giving somebody a fail to shovel in the middle of a snow. They'd probably argue, well, it just happened.
Yeah.
Yeah. Or you gotta wait for it to quit. Yeah, I, I think that's reasonable.
Even if it's blowing too, snow could have stopped, but you shoveled and it blew back over. That certainly happens. I remember I got a warning because we had a heavy snowfall and then it got really warm. So it all melted and our phone stock was flooded and then we got super cold again. So we had that much. And a couple of days later, came over and gave us warning. So we're out there with tiger boards trying to get rid of it. And it was pain in the butt. Yeah, we tried everything. We never could get rid of all of it.
That's a good thing you got a web. Doesn't help. Use a nice pick because you might damage the concrete and stuff like.
So we were nowhere near the concrete of the rice. Everything will run to a floor scraper. It was thick. It was not cut off.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Chuck.
Just one further comment that's subject to receiving first reading tonight as presented. We will be doing it again today. And one of the things that came up was what's regards to
weapon.
Weapons and discharge in the town.
Fireworks is watching the staff Sergeant Cordy's attention.
Fireworks.
Okay.
This is the definition and we feel we have to tighten it up and expand it to.
Excluent.
No, no, include.
Well, it said any projectile in there. So that would include.
But it's deployed my first that it's not supposed to. Or is it directed to just towards it? Okay. I didn't, you're not supposed to project sending projectiles towards Romans. Unless they're ice balls. You can do that.
It's a lot of cans.
I got one on the green. They were here yesterday. The way.
So for a second, you'll probably see some additional changes. We may remove it out of the bylaw and create a total separate by law. We haven't decided.
Okay, by next meeting, it'll be sorted out. Are there any other questions or concerns? Um. Personally, I don't mind you going from the 75 up to 100. But to go from 500 to 550, this doesn't seem to have a lot of bite to it. If 500 wasn't a deterrent, 550 won't be either.
What would counsel like to see?
Well, leave it at 500. Have you given any out here?
What she need branch was up?
Shooting guns.
Oh, well.
Yeah.
Yeah, that could maybe be.
I just don't. I just don't know. If $500 won't do it, 550 won't do it either.
I got somebody in mind. Permission section 15, 550.
It's a very, very excavation in the street without. Yeah, digging up the street like, you know, gold mining in the middle of Broadway. No. Well, if I find 500 to 550, just isn't going to cut it. If I find a gold, I'll get that.
Would you like them increased to something?
No, I just think 500 is good. I can like, I'm okay with the 75 to 100.
Be stricter.
I really don't know if we have a lot of that.
Maybe 750 or 1000.
But it's just shoot the weapons.
How much is it worth, Sergeant Cordy?
Disturb any weapon. Now, what is it like a BB gun is technically a weapon because it's an air powered.
Doesn't have to find weapon.
No, that's a terrible definition. That's what Shannon's dog.
So I think it should be less than 495 feet per second.
No.
Isn't considered.
Even your nurse.
That's certainly why I go to somebody's house.
A 495 you can buy without license.
It's even like toilet guns, you hit over 1000 feet for a flying license to buy those. But.
We're being very smart right now. Keep it motion. Because the definition of weapon. Anything.
Exactly. And in the old bylaw, it weapon, the definition weapon referred to the provincial criminal code. And now this one doesn't.
Well, it's the same one. We just wrote it out.
Anyway. It has to be worked on.
Yes. Could you clarify for me though, which is it supposed to that you want to extract to 500? Or is it all the 550?
Well. I don't like material deposited on a street. You went from 300 to 350. Yet like you raised a whole bunch of, we just raised $50.
You did.
Yeah.
Just to bring it in front of you to have the discussion.
I'm fine going pretty strict on the weather.
That's just not a common occurrence.
That's not a bad thing.
With that material, I would hope if somebody was out there discharging weapons. I didn't see Barry over there on Fifth Street last year giving out a $500 ticket. Do you see them looking into the bylaw? Did you get a $500 ticket?
No.
You could have.
You missed emailing your company.
Did you do it twice? That could have been a thousand bucks for us.
Yes. That's like that on breakfast days, the shooter would.
Oh, that's true. We can money you don't remember. Yeah.
It was a loser's rocket.
Yeah, just military. Material on the street for sale. Does that mean if somebody has a for sale sign in their car and it's parked on the street? That's against the. No, that means putting your pouch out on the street. The street itself or boulevard and trying to sell it. But people knew, put a night going saying free. For selling. Yeah. Take me a trip to landfill. Take this home. But but that's what that needs. Okay. So it doesn't include a car. I don't.
That's not the spirit of it. That's for sure.
Because they get waivers on Third Street during red cliff days to have their well, yeah, on the sidewalk, right? Right. But you can't have sidewalk sales in front of your house. Except for lemonade stands. That's probably.
This placing material in a gutter for like even those rubber things they use to.
Technically it is. But don't, don't close a lot of like. Some do and some don't. Like some are channeled and some aren't. Yeah. But that's not supposed to be there because in a major rain event, those do. They should definitely, they definitely obstruct the flow of storm.
I already had, I needed so much air right down our sidewalk.
But a lot of people still have mud over winter, but.
The town doesn't really need the god winters.
Yeah, they're wanting if they're on the snow cloud.
They're totally right. I'm sorry.
Well, then they're gone. Yeah, that's it's all. Anyway, yeah, that, that is, in my opinion, that is not supposed to be there. But people use them. I've seen them. I think I should be, should handle the curb.
No, he's got this fancy feature in his that lifts itself up so that you can get up over the curb when he gets home.
Oh, well. I'll save you 350.
Maybe back in. Maybe who's a blues was our.
Good. Any other questions?
So I'll give you an any excavating.
I'll practice saying in the street. Do it in your backyard.
Good. James, good for first reading. All in favor? Closed. Here. Turn the other way at least. Hey, request for decisions. Policing priorities. A mode of GPC. And the letter. Sergeant Courtney. So would somebody like to move them? Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Did you like?
We want to have any questions while he's here. And can we? Well, that's what I just asked.
Well, start direction.
Yeah, this is our direction. It's a priority. How they. He had any questions for us, maybe. I don't think you've seen them, have you?
No, it's the first time. The way it goes, I'll get them and then I put in a plan and I bring that plan back. Like a plan. You guys decide. The plan is good.
Yeah, it really, the only one that maybe we added is years ago. A few members used to occasionally have more public presence and stop in at places here and there, maybe the teen center, maybe the old age senior home there.
Convenience store.
Convenience stores. Just so it's more of a friendly public face versus when you saw. Driving or something like that.
Well, that is something that both on both sides.
And COVID probably curbed a whole bunch of that and it's never really picked up again. So that is one of the ones we added. The rest are pretty much carrying on the same road, right?
Going there traveling or like that taking smile.
Yes, it's sometimes it's good to meet the public when you're not stop pulling them over for something. Go ahead, Chris.
Another thing that I thought of, I don't know what council's thoughts are. I'm not in love with the idea myself, but we could add maybe the right curve turn on this for the priorities. By the right curve turn, everybody know what I'm talking about?
Yes.
I'm sure you know what I'm talking about.
That is.
Crossing the solid line on Broadway.
Making left turns and parking on the other side of the road.
I mean, I'm guilty of too, so. Just to pop in my head now.
So I don't know. That is a street thing, right? One solid line you're allowed to cross. You're not. So technically it is illegal.
Yeah, I know. I've been pulled over once for it.
But anyway, this is the letter that's going to be put together.
Okay, let's not include that. That sounds.
Well, it already is technically illegal.
Well, I know there's a traffic. Only so technically legally for my stuff, which is the priority. We don't need to highlight it.
Any other questions or concerns? I was ready to say all in favor. I think I did. You posed. Yeah, I got that far again. Okay. Go on, community space grant.
See you.
Okay, I'll move it.
I'll move on to your like next year. Thank you.
Okay.
See you after you do.
You bet.
Yeah, Matt. What motion?
So if we get this grant, there's no coal pay. It's, it would cover the total cost of the equipment, supply and install. We just might have to do a few things to the property, basically is how I interpret this.
That is what we are proposing. We have not, I guess, going up for final quotes or anything like that. I don't know what would change or anything. Yes, we would just, it wouldn't be as big of a play part kind of thing as what was discussed before. You would have to scale it down.
Because of location. Because I noticed that. Oh, okay.
Probably could that wants to if we stop it.
You could, yes.
Because this is moving it over here now, not over there.
That is what was proposed. Yes, that was an idea.
And with that too, because the skate park is going to be more accessible as well.
Yes.
It's, it's something.
That's what we had discussed and telling us come down last week.
We'd be looking at about a quarter of the cost of what we were have brought the budget in the past.
But we were looking at a bigger place base. Because of the one fifty, we scaled it back.
And this would still, if we got the grant, we could still be putting some money into next year's budget.
Yes, for landscaping. Whatever. Beautification expenses. I like how that's working. So just out of curiosity, could if we had to top this up? Could that excess grant money from the water? Be towards this?
I don't believe NSI covers recreation. But I could look at that.
Well, we could use that for the best.
Well, at some point in time, taxes are going to have to pay for some of that stuff too.
Well.
Get this. Otherwise, well, we're not going to keep up with spending just grant money and and pulling from interest.
Yeah.
Savings.
Well, I think my focus a couple months ago, it's seven years.
Well. Yeah, it just won't last. So.
It would have been on time projects, but if we're doing another Fifth Street every year, it'd be about ten years.
And now we look at just driving out of Red Cliff right now. If you look at Broadway, that was painted in two thousand and six. And if you look at how it's deteriorating, like at some point in time, we're going to have to be doing major road projects like that, like this third and third, which is four way stop. It's all chewed because everybody has to rotate their tires on takeoff, you know, that's. Well, I, I think they're not the problem. I think it's.
Me third Broadway.
Yeah, third Broadway. Third and third is another situation.
Yeah.
Right, anyway.
What was Main Street porting? And I know you said that they poured it really quickly. You were going.
That was a weekend. That was.
Because that is such a terror.
But that's just unrelating. It's not the surface breaking.
You're right. No, that's the red holes or so. Yeah, then what actual condition of the.
The clay. You.
It's oh, oh.
You mark a bump now and comes other time. It will be different. No, it is. The clay movement down there is crazy. From wet to frozen. It, it doesn't matter. We have some very swelly clays here. Should have been made into brick and they weren't.
Anyway. That road is terrible. Yeah, so is the one that got down by your place there.
Bridge of way, that's. Those are actual.
Was that on purpose?
No. No, that's actual lack of compaction on service lines, right? Settlement. Yeah. That, no, that's different than, than Main Street. Main Street is unique. Anyway, so it's those kind of projects that we're not going to be able to fund from reserves and stuff. It's going to have to be that other thing.
Well, that's I guess this is just to go for a grant.
Yeah.
That's kind of where my thoughts are with you know, future projects and whatnot. Things are nice. But we keep trying to keep taxes down. And if we're key to try to keep taxes down, then I just don't know that spending money on rec necessarily.
Oh, it's not adding money to us. We can just date as far as fifty basis.
Thank you, son.
Thanks for the grant.
Yeah, that's my thoughts.
Good. Any other questions or concerns? All in favor? Posted, Gary? And then overflow camping for the Black King's Bignines Agility Club Regional Championships.
Some of the weaver.
James? Go ahead, Chris.
So if we approve these overflow camping sites, do we charge for these sites?
We would still charge.
Okay.
It's just that technically you're not supposed to be tapping back there. So in front of the council for your decision. You do not want them there. And someone's playing baseball. Someone to get hit where.
Yeah. Obviously, dog show, it should be safe.
One question that I did have. Obviously, they're responsible for cleaning up after. You know, I've got a lot of dogs.
I would imagine these are fairly responsible dog owners.
Well, the majority of them.
Yeah. You. I'm sure there's some bad apples, of course, and I'm sure we'll have some bad apples left behind.
If they could open. Anybody? Because I'm assuming that this this is kind of like where that soccer field and stuff are. Or is this?
I don't know. They're going to use the diamonds for their actual agility. Circuits or road on the.
You saw the field. Three, I thought.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking like dog here, it's terrible for grass. And that's a lot of dogs. So are we concerned about those fields getting wrecked?
Last I was on, there's a lot of weeds.
Okay, we do cut it before they come in. And then it makes little, looks a little bit guiltier when they see a great big.
Well, I don't think it shows up.
Depending on the amount of water we have. By then.
It might be.
We can either water after they leave or it'll be very dry before they get here and they're helping.
Yes.
Any other questions or concerns? All in favor? Opposed, scared.
Well, we don't have any water.
Well, it's hard to say. We don't know. Policies, policy number one forty five, local area improvement. Consideration.
Tell me option one.
Chris? Option one. Any questions, concerns? They're not all in favor. Both was carried. Then Glenn Mott's member of parliament, twenty twenty four municipal budget survey. Yes, Larry? You guys all get a survey one by email?
I'll take this off. I don't think I did.
Oh. And we.
I thought we had to click on it.
Did we vote on this?
No.
All the table. But those scary. Others. More good news. Red Cliff rectangle arena grant update. Didn't get that either. Yo, none. That roof for information, any questions or concerns?
Yeah. Well, there's that new one that Danielle was talking about that is supposedly coming.
Four hundred and thirty thousand from some for their arena. But through a different stream at all. It wasn't even C trap. It was some women's enhancement program. Right? Wasn't that the commentator? Exercise of the arena.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, so I was thinking.
Anyway. I was leaving the commentator. They got four hundred and some thousand dollars.
So did they have tennis equipment?
I don't know what they did. But they're replacing their arena compressors too, right?
Yeah, well, I saw the, the light text they do.
Yeah.
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 Maybe.
Well, maybe Grant Hunter just digs a little deeper than our M L E.
Well, I was just, just saying. It'd be worthwhile, maybe having administration reach out or I'm going to just say, hey, how'd you find the money?
Well, it's in the commentary.
There's a process on the commentary.
The same. On the other hand, then maybe.
You can see that it's a newspaper.
Oh, yeah, it's a newspaper. Oh. Well, okay, it resembles a newspaper.
Yes, it's printed on. It comes into your, in your mailbox. Text for you.
There you go. Right, so on your tax bill.
All of it.
Opposed, that's carried. Okay, and then council important heat within event. Chris.
Was it the GPC?
Yeah. So Wednesday morning is the tax rate by law webinar with with all the pre-information and study. Well, then we'll have donors if James isn't coming. Then the did you get anybody for the March first one? No. Because she did send out emails that she'd like to know ahead of time if anybody's and show up.
I don't think I can make March first.
Who's all coming for my first? Who's going to be here?
It's probably my first is Friday.
Yeah, it's a leap year. I might be able to be.
I told her I would show up to both.
You're someone that work. I'll be here for the task or it might be.
I'm fitting this in between work.
I found about March sixth. That is when we were looking really like all the council. For this information.
That is your begging email.
It's from, yeah, I can probably.
You just sent out an email.
Yep.
Carla did, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, and it was a bleeding email. It said, please, it would be good if everybody.
The capital letters in the exclamation.
Yes.
It's on red in my box.
Yes.
If you could all respond to that one, let us know.
We were reresponding. Carla.
Yes.
That's the one where she's been working with, that's not region. Right, so it'll be a bigger update than probably what we got at IMC.
I was supposed to talk about that.
Well, I didn't. I just said it'll be a bigger update than what we got there. That's it. That's all. Jake? All in favor? Opposed, scared. Do we need a recess? Been an hour.
You gotta take off, Chris.
I said eight fifteen. I'll go this.
You will?
Yeah.
About that eight or seven. That A or seven?